Testing, there we go. Thank you. Absolutely. The Century Unified School District Board of Trustees Special Workshop for March 16th, 2021 is called to order at 6:36. Please let the record reflect that all board members are in attendance. Our next item is adoption of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board on the agenda? I have a motion by trustee Solis. I have a second by trustee Chan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven zero. And with that, we move on to our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice President Trustee Solis. But before we do that, I just want to remind the members of the public, if you wish to provide a public comment in our next item, the number to dial is 559-276-3150. Thank you.
Please stand and face the flag. Ready, salute. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we will now take any comments from the public. We will allow 30 seconds to pass before we move on to our next item. Once again, the number to dial is 559-276-3150. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the board on any item not currently on this agenda. Once again, the number to dial is 559-276-3150.
President Carrillo, we do not have any calls in the queue at this time.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our one-itemized item for today's special workshop, which is information item, receive information regarding district facilities, master plan. I presume there will be a presentation. If there's no objection from the board, we'll take any comments from the public following the presentation, and then we can engage in discussion amongst the board and any, including comments or questions we may have as a board. So again, members of the public, if you wish to provide a comment during this information item, the opportunity will be provided to you following the conclusion of administration's presentation, and the number to dial is 276-3150. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Carrillo. Tonight, we are presenting to the board for information the draft version of the master facility plan that's been developed with Schoolworks. This has been an ongoing project for this past year, and we are pleased to bring it forward for discussion tonight. It is a draft. We do expect some feedback and comments, and then following that, we can update based on the feedback that we receive and take it to, back to the board for final approval at a subsequent meeting. So the plan, as you'll see, is lengthy. It's got information in every school. This is an update to the plan that was presented back in 2016. Some of you will recall that. We did some updates, I believe, in April of 2019, and this is the current information as we have it. We are joined tonight on audio with Schoolworks staff, and that's Mr. Ken Reynolds and Mr. Brett Merrick, who have been putting the product together, and they will be answering questions as well as myself. I also have Mr. Joseph Martinez, who's our facilities director, is with us tonight. And so we will, we will begin with going through the executive summary is the first portion of this document. And so we'll use that as our presentation tonight. It's about 15 pages long. And then, as needed, we can jump into certain portions or pages of the full presentation if there are any questions from the board where we just need to do a deeper dive. So with that, I will start the presentation. So we're going to start out by looking at the, just some history of what's been done over the past several decades, actually. We have had, since 1982, there have been a total of $312 million in bonds which have been used, local school bonds which have been used to build new schools and modernize existing schools and provide upgrades to our programs and safety improvements, all kinds of improvements over the years. So just going back in time, 2004 was our first voter-approved measure following the unification of the district, a $40 million bond. And that money was used for multiple projects, including the construction of Harvest Elementary, Collegiate Stadium, the West Campus Ag Farm, additional classrooms, transportation facility, and technology, security, and safety upgrades. We got to 2008. Measure B was passed by the voters. That was a $152 million bond. It was subsequently reduced back to 60, about $65 million, and that was due to the decline in assessed home values that was a result of the Great Recession during those years. And the district, because of assessed value limitations, was unable to utilize the entire amount of the bond, so it was, it was taken back to that $65 million number. This bond funded many projects, including Glacier Point, Pathway Pershing, the temporary Tilly Construction School, design phase of the Justin Garza High School, multiple projects out at the West Campus, which included HVAC upgrades, hardcourts, backstop parking, et cetera, utilities. At East High School, refinishing the pool and the deck and some hardcore improvements, improvements at El Capitan, improvements at Madison, McKinley, Roosevelt, and Teague, improvements at Biola, Pershing, Herndon Barstow, Madison, McKinley, Rio Vista, Roosevelt, and Teague, and tech upgrades that were done district-wide. Also, some preschool upgrades at Herndon Barstow and Teague, the design phase of the District Service Center, athletic field improvements at elementary sites, and a lot of other miscellaneous projects. Going to page two of the, of the document, and moving on to the year 2016, Measure C was passed by the voters. This was a reauthorization of those dollars that weren't used in Measure B, so it was a total of $87.3 million. This funded the construction of Tilly Elementary, the permanent school. Justin Garza High School, Phase One, to date, there's about $42 million that's been spent out of Measure C so far. Remember, this project is multifunded. High School is funded out of Measure C, Measure B, state matching funds, our certificates of participation, and Fund 40 a couple of years ago. There's, the last, the last phase of Measure C was just sold, as the board is aware. $20 million was sold here recently to help with the completion of the Garza High School first phase. Money was also spent for modernization of Madison, Roosevelt, and McKinley. And then, lastly, moving on to Measure D, which was passed by the voters in November of 2020 with about 60% approval. This is a $120 million bond, which includes completing the remainder of the phases of the high school. We'll talk about that some more in a minute. Constructing a new elementary school and other, other various improvements that will be done. These bonds are issued over time. It's not just all issued at one time, but it's issued in a, in a series of bond issues. And so we'll talk about that some more. And Measure D will also qualify the district for state matching funds, which is an important part of how we fund our projects. Any questions so far?
No, we can continue through the presentation and open for discussion at the end, please.
Sure. The next page, page three, is just kind of some background information. So it's there, there for information about, information about the organization of the district and the community that we serve. So I won't go into detail on that at this time. Again, this, this process has been going on for, for the last several months and involved a lot of our staff, the school sites, principals, our administrative staff or superintendent and assistant superintendents, our facilities team, our maintenance director, Mr. Bath, our area administrators, and all of our facilities team. So we, it's very much a team, team process, and we appreciate everyone's input on this. The next slide is just a summary of what we have here in the document. The update that we're looking at today, this document, will help the district to continue efforts to define and prioritize our key projects on a site-by-site basis. We want to try to be able to maximize all of our funding opportunities with, with the state. And so that's, that's how we look at how we fund our projects. This is a dynamic planning document, so it's not meant to just take a look at once and put on the shelf. It's going to be a living document that will continue to guide us for, for the foreseeable future for multiple years. We would like to bring back updates to the board on a periodic basis so that we can continue to monitor the, the progress on our facilities and, and just talk about changes as they come, because inevitably, you make plans, and plans adapt to the situation at hand. So again, there's just some background there. The, the facilities master plan, I'll just mention, it was, is broken into multiple sections. We have a, the executive summary that we're going through right now. The section two is, is the different funding sources. Section three breaks down the demographics of the district and projections. Section four is the longest part of the document, which is a school-by-school assessment for each school, showing enrollment projections, existing conditions with a site map, building inventory, and assessment of our facilities and master plan diagrams for each school, for each campus. This next page is just, again, gives you just the, the different components that make up this process and how it was put together. So I won't go into detail there. Page seven is an overview of the plan. The plan identifies a total of $412 million plus in improvements. This is, this is the, the big picture look. This would include $171 million in modernization projects for existing facilities and about $241 million in potential future new construction projects. Just for comparison, when we did the, the study in 2016, that master plan encompassed about $330 million. And so today, we're looking at about $412 million. Again, this, this will be a moving target over time. On page eight, this breaks down the, the projects that are upcoming into funding phases. Again, there's more detail in the, in the report. This is the, the top-level look. So Phase One, as we've talked about during the past year, is focused on completion of the high school, which includes the next phase following the, the construction of the, the first phase of the school. We have additional work to do on the ballfields. We have the Visual and Performing Arts Center, and we have the, the pool or the aquatic center. Phase One is estimated at about a cost of around $84 million. And this would be funded primarily from the first series out of the Measure D bond. We're hoping to, to do that this coming fall of 2021. There'd be an issuance expected of about $70 million, with the remaining dollars coming from matching funds and developer fee funds. Phase Two is the next phase, which would happen a couple of years out, which would be for the new elementary school. We have land at Shields and Brawley. We are looking at also the update to the Ag Labs, or new Ag Labs, I'm sorry, at, at the West Campus. Kinley Modernization and Herndon Barstow Modernization. This phase of funding would be approximately $52 million, which would include the, the next series of bonds that would be issued in a few years from now, planning for that at about the range of $32 million. And then Phase Three, the next modernization, current school improvement would be for El Capitan Middle School. There are several components there, replacing portables with permanent classrooms, classroom modernization, library, media center, and admin, and the wrestling and music rooms. And this phase would be about $24 million, of which about $18 million would come out of the school bond. So with those three phases, looking at those dollars, that would encompass the, all the bond funds that we have for Measure D. We do have some opportunity at this point for additional funding that could, could also supplement these funds and enable us to expedite some of our projects. And as you know, the COVID funds that we've been talking about the last few meetings, federal dollars that are one-time dollars, do potentially help us with some ventilation improvements that's called out for in the, the language of those funding streams. There are energy service contracts, if you recall, with our solar projects. We were able to do that through an energy service contract with a, a long-term funding for that. And also, there are municipal leases that can come into play as well. There's also a new state grant that was passed into law last year, known as AB 841, which enables districts to apply for funds that would also help with air quality systems and improvements. There's also, as you know, CTE grants that are out there. So there, there are different funding mechanisms that can come into play in addition to our, our core funding, which is our bond, our state matching funds, and our developer fees. And then Phase Four is encompassing everything that does not, that's not spelled out in Phases One, Two, and Three. Again, the, these are listed as they were shown to the board previously in, in previous presentations. We can have discussion about priorities and, and timing and things like that. Page nine is giving a chart to show how our funds are broken out between the school bonds, the state modernization funds that we expect to receive, and the state new construction funds that we expect to receive going forward, and developer fees as well. So the breakdown there is about $55 million plus in state modernization funds. We have $33 million in new construction funding from the state, potentially. We have a reimbursement of a previous funding request from the state for Tilly Elementary, which we are anticipating receiving that money later this, this year, in 2021, which is $12.8 million. It's already been approved by the state. Developer fee income, we, we projected that over about an eight-year period. And that would average about two, a little over $2 million a year. And we have the, the Measure C funds that we have available that were just, just issued and sold here recently in February, and that's $20 million. And then lastly, Measure D, as we talked about a minute ago, is $120 million. It gives us a, a total amount of $260 million of funds that we anticipate will be there for us for these projects as we move forward in time. If you remember, the entire project funding list was $412 million. So that leaves about $152 million that would be needed in the future years, whether that be another school bond in the future, whether that be other sources. That's, that's the amount of dollars that would need to be obtained to, to complete everything that's in this report. On page 10, this is an overview of the enrollment projections, going back in history for 10 years and going forward for six years. And you can see over, over time, the, the growth of the district. In 2011, 12, our enrollment was at 14,878, and this year, we're at 15,742. So we, we started, you know, looking back on those 10 years, we were, we were growing at a pretty rapid pace there, and it started to flatten out in the last four or five years. And, and the next four or five years, again, looking at that, it's, it's fairly flat, although it's really going to be dependent on the, the progress of the development that we're seeing around us and how quickly that, that happens. So this is somewhat of a conservative look. It's very possible that those numbers will, will go up even more rapidly than what's being shown here. Page 11 is an analysis of the classrooms. This is classroom counts that were used to calculate our eligibility for the state school facilities funding program, the state matching program that I was just talking about. And so there's a snapshot of that, that, that looks at school by school, and it also breaks, breaks out the permanent and portable classrooms for each school. The next page gives, gives you a visual map of the district and the, the percentages of portable classrooms looking at each school, so you can kind of see where we have a higher percent based on the color coding. And then page 13 is giving a net classroom utilization look. And again, there, when you look at class sizes, number of students, there are different ways of calculating that, depending on if we were talking about the state facilities program or talking about just what our, our class size is within the district. So there's, there's a snapshot of that. And that's followed on page 14 by a projection of utilization of the school, at each school. Colors are moving there from, from blue to red, showing how much we anticipate as we project into the future, what the impact will be on those schools and where there might be a, a need for either adding additional buildings or adding schools. And then the last slide in the executive summary is just a, a chart showing utilization, and it takes the number of classrooms and excludes the, the portable, portable rooms to show how many, what our, what our utilization is, just looking at permanent classrooms. So it gives you a picture, again, of how much we're, we're using portable buildings and our need to continue to, to grow with adding more classrooms. So with that, I will, want to just give an opportunity for the Schoolworks team, if they have anything that they would like to, to add to the overall presentation on the executive summary, and then we can jump into more questions and, and public comment. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Hope you can all hear me just fine.
Yes.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening with you. And one comment I wanted to make was, you know, we've been looking at the AB 75 bill that will be hopefully our next statewide school bond, that will provide the matching funds for your upcoming projects. And one of the components of that new bond bill requires districts that want to participate in the state building program to have a facility inventory submitted to the Department of Education. And the details that they want to see in that inventory are included in this master plan. So by having this document updated, we are meeting the requirements for you to continue receiving state funding, assuming that bond bill comes to fruition.
Great, thank you. And so with that, were there additional comments? Okay, if we can get the lights back on. At this time, we will take any comments from the public. So once again, if there is any member of the public, either in attendance or watching us remotely, if you'd like to provide any comment, now is the time to call. The number to dial is 559-276-3150. Can we have this light to my left dimmed a little? It's, it's bright. Ah, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
President Carrillo, we do not have any calls in the queue.
Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, we will now move to board discussion. Is there any comment questions from the board? Trustee Solis?
Can you give me an update? Where are we on the Shields and Brawley Elementary School as far as construction? Where are we in the process?
Ask Mr. Martinez to respond to that question. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Shields and Brawley is currently going through DTSC certification. The drawings for that school have already been through DSA, and they've already, they've already been approved. So as soon as funding becomes available, we will, we look to start that school as it comes up in, in priority.
What money are you referring to?
So we go through the application, and we can either wait for state funding, or we can use the district's money, whatever type of funding the board chooses to how to prioritize it, and build that school.
And we withdraw the matching funds at a later time for the same school?
Correct, yeah. So the way that state funding works is we put our, we submit our application, and we get in line. And as funding becomes available, it starts dishing out funding based off the priority that the applications were submitted.
I have a couple of questions. You want me to go through? Okay. On the map, we're showing the number of portable or classrooms being used. What's your explanation of why they're at 49% in the Teague area?
Which, which page number are you referring to, Mr. Solis?
Page 12. Page twelve.
Portable percentage?
Page five. What was, which five? Which page?
Page twelve.
Twelve.
I'm looking for a rationale why it's that way.
Why it's that high?
Yeah.
There's been a lot of portables added throughout the years. Since I've been here, there's probably added, we've probably added about two. But typically, when the modernization comes up, you would demolish those portables and construct new buildings. However, if there is not the capacity to expand and build new port, or build new buildings, or distribute, or redo the boundaries so that we can shift the boundary lines, so that we can alleviate the enrollment on that site, portable is the quickest and fastest solution for that. Unfortunately, you know, it is the way it is, and it's kind of just a quick and fast solution until we get a chance to do a modernization.
So the shortage of the student body assigned to that school is driving how many portables we have there before we can house them, correct?
It's the, it's kind of a compilation of a lot of factors. You know, it's the development around the area, how many housing developments, and how many, what's the student generation rate for new housing developments, and the population density. So there's a few different factors that drive the enrollment for those, for the sites.
Is that a percentage of total portables within the district and the percentage that is allocated to that location?
For the area itself, it is the percentage for that school site itself.
And for remodeling of the schools, there's a timeframe we have to meet as well. Like, you can't just go back every year asking for the state money. What's the timeframe?
So for portable buildings, the life cycle is twenty years, and for permanent buildings is twenty-five years, and that's recognized through the state.
And I'm assuming Facilities is tracking that on the calendar, so we know when that time is coming up, correct?
Correct, yes.
So we can tap into those funds.
Correct, yes. So we track that, and typically, you know, since the portables are up sooner, five years sooner than the permanent buildings, we typically try to couple those together and do them all at once. Does make sense to interrupt and impact the site for instruction to come back and do projects separately.
Okay.
Those dates are outlined in each school site. If you go to each, go down to each level of each school site, you'll see the modernization eligibility dates.
Yeah, in the backup area, yeah.
And typically, when we bring a school bond up for the voters to approve, there's a list of projects that go along with that school bond. If the bond is approved, can, are we limited to using that bond money on those projects only?
So typically, whatever is in the bond language, you are bound to the language that the community and the voters approve.
That's it for now.
Thank you. Any, trustee Paul?
First, I want to ask a favor. Could you guys get closer to your mics? I'm a little hard of hearing with the masks, it just gets worse.
Thank you, trustee Paul. You beat me to it. I was about to remind you of.
So I've got a few questions. Going back to page three, we talk about how much, how much carryover there is from the, from B and C. It's twenty, it's twenty-four million, based on what's there. But then when we get to page nine, it says local bond available balance, twenty million. Is that a mistake, or am I just missing something?
That was an oversight, so the three, the twenty-three million was included, the remaining of Measure B, but that remainder of Measure B will be going towards Justin Garza High School. So the twenty million is more accurate.
So it should be included in this number or not?
I'm sorry.
It's already, it's already, it's already in use, so is that why you didn't include it in this number?
Correct, yeah. It should be twenty million.
Thank you. I know that this is a, like you were saying, a living document, but our growth looks like, or at least our projection, if you were to draw a line across that for the past, or for ten years, it's flat. So we've got a six-year projection. Is there, I know it's beyond the scope of this document, but just for the purposes of discussion, do we have any idea what it's going to look like maybe ten years out? Do we see growth? Do we not, I mean, there's only a few parts of town that are growing, right?
So, yeah, so we track development in the area as well, and there are a lot of slotted developments, multifamily as well as single-family developments in the area. As to when those will get constructed, it's kind of undetermined now. So as we see more and more development take place, and each annually as we do our demographic study, we intend to update this as it comes back. The further you go out, it's just harder to pinpoint a more accurate assumption of what it'll be.
So the, so the boundary of this study is six, six years, and no one's willing to stick their neck out beyond that, basically?
With that?
For a guess.
For the six, you mean, the six-year number, it's hard, because if, two years from now, if there's a, you know, there's, excuse me, super growth in the area, it's going to throw the number out of whack. So that's why we do it annually.
Okay, thought I'd ask a question. I'm going back to the table on page seven. Kind of alongside trustee Solis' question, we have a lot of portables at Teague. Seems like that's just been, you know, it seems like it's kind of been left in the dust. There's no new construction proposed, yet we got all those portables, and they've been there for a while. Is there a reason why we're not considering new construction? Do they still have enough life in them that we, on the next bond measure, we're thinking about that? I mean, what's the plan there?
Well, the first plan is trying to create additional capacity for the growth that's incoming. So right now, there's a, there's a need for, to alleviate the other areas for, you know, over enrollment, for impact. The sites are heavily impacted, so we're trying to alleviate them to being overcrowded. And then as we, as we grow and redistribute the boundaries, if it comes to that, if that's an option the district chooses to go to, then we go back and look at demolishing those portables and constructing new buildings, and not putting those portables back into play, and essentially trying to gain more green space back for the students.
Okay.
There's a few options.
So basically, we're just dealing with what we have, and then when we get a window to deal with it, we're going to treat it differently?
Yeah, so, for example, if we can take all those portables and convert them into permanent, and as we grow, if we add two more schools and the boundaries change, and that enrollment goes from nine hundred, for example, down to six hundred, they're going to have a lot of empty buildings, and they're permanent, and, you know, it's going to be impacted. Classroom space that probably will not be needed.
Okay. Did you say Shields and Brawley is, did we get a final determination from the DTSE?
Not, not yet, no.
Did we have a removal action?
We had some small, but it was not, not a big, big concern for the stuff that was found.
Okay, so they're waiting, waiting final reports on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Everything looks all right on that?
Yeah, it was very minor what they found.
Okay. The new elementary schools here are Constance. Do we own that land?
Correct, yes.
We do. And we've already been through all the processes with the state. We're good?
The DTSE, I got to take a look back to make sure that we still have DTSE approval. We'll reexamine the site to make sure no dumping has gone on. It's fenced, but, you know.
So you still need to deal with them?
Just to make sure we're good to go, yes.
The other thing that I didn't see in here is anything regarding the district offices. And I know that's been something that you've talked about, Andy, a little bit, but I'm just wondering if we're going to get caught in a situation where we're going to end up with a bunch of, I mean, those things are, they've been in there a while, you know, and I can't help but think that we're going to end up with something unplanned that we need to do to fix something there. I mean, did, were they looked at closely for that kind of decision?
So, yes, and that's always a question. You know, we're in the business of students. So first and foremost, we're in the business of students, and first and foremost, the state funds instruction spaces. So it's hard to get funding from the state to do district offices. If we want to do district offices, you know, we'll have to decide here, or the board, or, you know, some options come up in how we would fund those projects.
Okay, don't misunderstand me. I know what our priority needs to be, needs to be the students. But I'm just concerned that we might end up with something that we might have to fund unexpectedly. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we've looked carefully at those and can plan for whatever we got to do.
Okay. We do look at them. It's not as in-depth as we do some of the sites. I mean, it's not something that we prioritize. But it's on, I believe it is on the list, to have District Service Center, kind of a, on the end of the list, but it is on the list.
That's Service Center. Is that the same as District Office?
It is, so that, when it says District Service Center, it is the new district offices.
Okay, okay.
It's the last line item on the project list.
Yeah.
Right, page four, yeah.
Is there a reason why the Shields and Brawley approved plans aren't placed on the, it's page one fifty-two? Because we do have plans that have already been approved, right?
Correct, yes. We can implement those.
Yeah.
On those, yeah.
Thank you.
That's all I got for now. Thank you. Thank you, trustee.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, trustee Solis?
Question for the superintendent. Who sets the priorities for the facility projects?
Those are, I believe that the board has had, has always weighed in on the priority list in the past. These are, this is, a lot of these projects that are currently on this plan came from the previous plan. Obviously, we have Garza High School who has taken, that has taken, is now the priority in order to complete it. And then we do know that Shields and Brawley is, the Shields and Brawley Elementary School is next in line. The one thing that we do need to consider are the improvements at West Campus, and we just had that conversation administratively, because we are anticipating for West to be a standalone, comprehensive site with all the bells and whistles. That means academically and extracurricular, extracurricular sports and co-curricular programs. So the one thing that we talked about in great length earlier this, or actually last week, was the improvements at West Campus and how far on the priority list they are. So that's something that we're going to need to keep an eye on.
So do you feel it would be a fair statement to say that the sitting board is the one that prioritizes the projects on an approved bond measure?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That is the reason this is coming to the board this evening as an informational item, so the board can weigh in on this preliminary draft, long-range facility master plan.
Correct. So that's one of the things that I do want us to engage in a conversation as far as providing direction to administration on some of these projects. As Superintendent Alvarado mentioned, one of the conversations that this board has engaged in is developing and remodeling West so that it can function as an independent school. We made a decision to separate and have it as its own, but we know that that building is, is how old? I think, how old is West, West Campus?
It's going to be celebrating its hundred-year centennial.
That's what I thought, the hundred-year celebration, and the number of portables on that campus?
Oh, yeah, we're past thirteen. Yeah, we've got quite a bit of portable out there.
So in part of today's conversation, well, whether it happens today or before this, this plan is approved, is for us to discuss what priority do we want on these projects? We've received a presentation on the specific projects that are funded, but then for those that are, that there isn't any specific funding source, and we have flexibility to direct administration to either allocate potential COVID funds or potential general funds or other funding sources, one of the things that we've talked about is working with our grant contractor to look for grants to improve some of these buildings. Again, I think what we need to discuss, though, is what is our priority? Is West Campus the next project that we need to ensure gets completed so that we can provide facilities to those students attending that school? I don't like portables. I think everyone on this board knows. If you didn't, very clear, I don't support the use of portables. It's not the equivalent to having real classrooms. So one of the things that I'd love to have a conversation about is what can we do as a board to ensure that we're not planning to have portables, that we're planning and building so that we're providing sufficient space for our students? Trustee Paul, you talked about the projected growth. How can we better project that growth with our third-party independent vendors that we're working with to ensure that as we're building these projects, we don't, it doesn't have to come back five years or sooner to say, hey, now we need portables? One of the conversations, one of the questions about the portables was what our plan is. Do we have in the document a list of what the life, where each portable plan is? I know that we don't qualify for any additional funding until they've reached twenty years. Some of these portables have a life expectancy. I know when I've asked questions, twenty-five, thirty years, and we push them until we can and we were able to replace them. Do we have a list of what that looks like and where they are?
Yeah, so there's the school assessments. Each site will have assessment and a breakdown of the portables and the buildings, and then what their, what their age, and then when they're going to be, when they're eligible for modernization money.
Is that part of this plan?
Correct, yes.
Can you, can you tell me what page it's on?
Why don't you take the board through one of the school sites and lay out how it's formatted in this document?
Can I ask a clarifying question real quick about portables? I seem to remember through reading, reading through the document that there was a period of time in school funding when you had to demonstrate that a certain percentage of new construction was portable. Do I remember that right?
You are correct, yeah.
Okay, so that is in part the reason why we are where we are?
Correct, yeah.
On a lot of schools?
Yes, years ago, the state would mandate that a certain percentage of a school being built was encompassed by portable buildings, correct. So that's why some of the schools look very much alike, yes, Steinbeck, Seroy and Liddell, and Harvest, who, and Polk, who all have built-in portable, or built-in modulars, should I say, yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to see the Central West projects get moved up. Most of them are in a Phase Four. Everybody in this district pays taxes. I'd like to say those people that have been on that side, they're generational. They have paid taxes into this district for a long time. And if you think of the equity between the high schools, and if you think of the biggest bang for our dollar, how many students do we anticipate having at West?
Well, right now, we're about eight hundred, huh? Go ahead.
Actually, as of this morning, we're almost at nine hundred.
Nine hundred.
And final registration is still taking place, so I see we get, by start of school year, we should probably be close to a thousand. This year, they're housing about seventeen hundred.
It's very old. I personally, I mean, I know a lot of these schools need the attention. I know McKinley needs attention. I know that Herden and Barstow needs the attention. Most of these schools are pretty adequate, but I just think that the best bang for our buck is going to be in the high school. And I'd like, I personally would like to see them move up in terms of most of it in Phase Four. Now, if you gave a timeline on these phases, I didn't hear it, so I apologize. But I'd like to hear the timeline. If the timeline isn't a reasonable amount of time, then I probably would maybe defer my thoughts. But if this is pushing out five or ten years, I don't know that, I personally would like to see that wait that long. And again, I'm not taking anything away from the projects that have been categorized in a higher priority. I just think your high schools are your gems. You know, some, I don't know, people may feel differently. I see that we're investing in several of the Phase Four, that some of these high, elementarys are relatively new. I know they need attention, but the reality, do they need the attention sooner or quicker than some of these really old facilities?
If I could, I can, I want to add a comment to that. If you look at the graph on page thirty-one, it appears that our student population is aging up by numbers. So two questions about that. Number one, I agree with, I agree with the sentiment and the importance of making sure that the high school is being improved and is a priority. But number two, I know that our district historically hasn't had a history, at least at least in the recent past, of building homes that are conducive to older families. They're usually starter homes. And I'm wondering if we're seeing anything with the pattern of development or what you're learning from talking to developers where they're building maybe the next generation of home for second-time buyers, for a move up. Do you have any feel for that?
Uh, yes, so what's already been approved to the city is kind of geared towards something similar, what you're talking about, uh, first-time home buyers. There is a mix of, um, I guess, uh, multi-generation homes as well. What has been passed through the city is a requirement to fulfill a mix of, of, uh, of housing units or the, the use. So, you know, if there's, you know, it depends on the density. So you have a mix of low, low, medium, and, and the high, medium, and things like that. And that, that's a requirement now through, through the city, so as...
So that's a part of the general plan? Is that what you're talking about?
That is part of the general plan, is also getting narrowed down into the specific plan for the West area. Yeah, that plan has not been approved yet.
The West Development Area?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So the West area specific plan has not been approved yet, but it's still going through. And, um, there are some zoning changes and land use changes and things like that. So once that gets approved, approved, they will update the general plan as well.
Okay, so the answer is generally yes?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
However, there are a, a lot of housing developments that have already been approved, and they continue to get approved under the current status.
Okay.
So we won't be seeing those effects, you know, or major effects for quite a while.
Thank you. And thank you, Trustee Cervantes, for pointing that out.
President Correa?
Go ahead.
Uh, Trustee Paul, in some ways, I just, I, and maybe it's a conversation we have. And I think that one of the best indicator, and Joseph shared that, obviously, the West area specific plan hasn't been approved. Well, you can see with our eyes where, where we're growing, right? It's that Harvest Elementary School area where you're seeing like the most construction. Those are 300, $400,000 homes. Um, you know, so, so you are looking to, to your point. It's not, it's not gonna be, for the most part, a starter house. It'll be somewhere, somewhere sort of in the middle, obviously depending on where, where they are. You know, like, I, I, I completely understand sort of the, the sentiment in terms of where our prioritization is. Uh, I'm just looking in terms of our, our justification study that we, uh, looked at just in November. And from what it seems and, and our numbers indicate it, we're just busting at the seams at our elementary schools. I mean, currently, um, again, looking at our justification study from November 2020, and, um, our unhoused students from, from development, we're, we're way over in, in that. I act, I, in terms of my general sentiment, where, like, where teachers will share, parents will share, I actually thought maybe we were potentially over capacity, uh, or sorry, under capacity actually at the junior high level, because I always hear especially thoughts on, um, discipline issues, especially at, at Glacier. But at least in terms of the numbers, it, it, at least in terms of classrooms per pupil, that doesn't seem the case, that it's at the seventh and eighth grade. It actually seems like it's really at the elementary school that, even though despite what you're saying in terms of the trends. Sometimes I don't know what to do in terms of the trends, uh, if I'm honest with you. Uh, Trustee Paul, and I, and I think I shared this at our last school meetings. I've been, just for myself, just tracking how our projections go, looking at at least four documents that have come to us. So I'm talking, thinking about our, uh, 2016 facility plan. I'm looking at our, uh, 2017, 18 demographic study, our, our most recent demographic study. And then what, um, uh, Mr. McLean just shared on, on, uh, on Tuesday night. Our, our numbers, I, 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 I mean, I, I, I know we're using a third-party vendor, but, but the fluctuation of our numbers is very, very hard to make any projections. I, I, I mean, i- i- in terms of the, the four documents I'm sharing, we're talking within a four-year cycle. And we're, we're talking of differences of seven to eight percent per year in some of these. And that's really hard to make any sort of real, uh, decisions when we're, when our numbers are showing that level of, uh, of, of, uh, sort of swings. I, I, I mean, that's something we have to talk about.
Go ahead, Mr. Paul. Okay. So we're, we're, I mean, this is, this is a plan for six years out. And, uh, or, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't our birth rates still falling?
In general, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and across California specifically.
So that's kind of, kind of where I was going with that. I see what you're saying about the, you know, the, the variances and it's hard to predict. But, uh, I just have a feeling by the time we get to the end of this plan, we're gonna be looking at more high school students than even, are even indicated here. But that's just, that's just a general observation. May or may not be accurate for our district, but across California, it's accurate, I think.
Uh, I mean, mostly, especially the Bay Area, that's, that's where they're flying off a cliff.
Trustee Solis?
Like you commented, I believe that one of the, excuse me, one of the areas that's hardest to, to manage in terms of projecting is, is the mobility factors, right? We have people moving in and out of the district, and there's no, no easy way of, of, you know, predicting that, I'll say, so, but...
Thank you, Trustee Solis?
Um, we can grind down these numbers as fine as you wanna grind them down. The, the reality that we have to deal with, and that's usually what I look at, is what's gonna open up the north end of this dis, district is gonna be Veterans Boulevard. That's the Leach Plan. Once that's in, they're gonna be coming. We need to start focusing on, as previous boards have done, building the elementary school, getting that going, so we can get ahead of the curve for once in a while. Having sat on a board where we were behind the eight ball, and, and we were just playing catch-up with these students, it hurts the public, it hurts the school district, it hurts the ability of our teachers to, to teach our students. When I came on the board, we had teachers that were basically teaching out of cardboard boxes, moving from classroom to classroom. I don't wanna relive that. So with that, I feel the board has to set a priority along with the community has done. We sold school bonds on completing certain projects. And on every school bond you looked at, there's the cherry project, okay? And then, of course, for political reasons, several others were listed. We need to focus on those cherry projects so we can hold up to our community that we as a board are moving forward with their wishes to build these facilities. One of the reasons why we have overcrowding in our elementary schools is because we don't have the facilities for them. If we do that, we will have a, a domino effect of, once we have the facility built, we can now have the conversation of what is the adequate, adequate classroom size. And again, we can look at the numbers all you want. As far as I'm concerned, the bigger your classroom size is, the harder it is to have a good academic outcome. So we wanna, we wanna be able to give the tools to our teachers to do their job. And one of that is, we are gonna have to start the conversation about classroom sizes. So with that, where I can see that there's a lot of older schools that need help, I agree with that. We need to look at where their remodeling funny, money on the calendar falls for West Campus so we can, we can maximize our dollars and get as much state fund to help us, funding to help us modernize that site. When that is, I don't know. Can you tell me, Mr. Martinez, for West Campus?
The availability of funds?
Yeah.
Um, it is up now for eligibility, so we can start getting the application in. However, we need to start design and, or have a direction of where that school is, is going. And then we can start design and then get the documents ready to get in line.
Okay. As well as, we have to keep our eye on what the economy is. Having lived through, again, another board where the economy tanked, and then it didn't matter how many school bonds we had approved, we couldn't sell the bonds. So we need, again, to get ahead of this curve, especially for the elementary school. And I'm looking towards the superintendent and, uh, Mr. McLean over there to tell us how we can get ahead of this funding so we can get this elementary school built. Then we can have the conversation about classroom size. We can have the conversations about, uh, portable classrooms, because we might not need them if we have the permanent facilities that we need. Not taking away from anything you said, Mr. Cervantes, about, uh, West Campus, but the bottom line is, this community did not pass a school bond choosing to tax themselves at this time to rebuild West Campus. Even though that is within our jurisdiction, it needs to be done. I am not arguing. But there are funding sources that do that. We need to maximize those funding sources. And I'd like to hear from the superintendent and Mr. McLean, what is the plan of how we're gonna fund, how we're gonna sell these bonds so we can get these schools built? Because I do know there's other districts out there. They have done, they have done the, what is it, leased the own type of funding on schools. There's different things out there. That's what we need to look at. I don't think anybody on this board's gonna argue the point that we need some more permanent facilities.
So the, the staff's recommendation at this point is to complete Garza High, that's phase number one, first and foremost. We need to finish that. Um, and I, we do, we heard it loud and clear from the community about, about the new high school, um, not being built. And guess what? We're about 75% complete on the project.
Correct.
Um, and so, uh, that project will get done. Uh, the new elementary school is another priority that's listed in Phase Two, first bullet. We have West Campus, the new Ag Labs, uh, those, that Phase Two is about what, two years out, Mr. McLean? Joseph?
Uh, Phase Two for the new high school?
Yeah, new, new elementary school.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a couple of years.
Couple of years away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what we'd like to do is entertain the possibility of, of accelerating the West projects right after that. So new high school, new elementary school, and then the West pro, uh, Central West, Central High School, um, uh, projects, and, and see if we can accelerate, uh, the completion of those projects. And then we continue on with the modernizations. Um, and West Campus is up for eligibility right now?
Correct, yes.
So, I mean, there, that can easily be done, if that's, if that is the desire and the wish of the board.
Yeah, we recently put in a few more portables, so those portables timeline has just started, but majority of the campus is up for eligibility for modernization. And to kind of shed some light on the way the state is, has funds, funds these projects where there's new construction or modernization, there's two separate pots of money, one for new construction, one for modernization, and those lines are different. I can be 57 in line for one, and I can be third in line for the other. So it really depends on the type of project and when our, our applications go in, and when we're receiving this money. For example, if we have built Shields and Brawley, we might be, you know, 59th in line. If we go for McKinley Elementary, modernization, it's a different, it's a different type of funding, we might be 10th in line. So, you know, just because it's a, it's a priority doesn't necessarily mean that the funds will come up in that order.
Right. At the end of the day, staff's, uh, the expectation is to make sure that we're leveraging all those monies that are available to us at the state level. And it is, it is a bit tricky, um, because it is, there is a timing issue involved in that. Um, but with that being said, we're, we're always gonna be able to go out and try to leverage all, all the dollars that are available to the district. But, I mean, it sounds like that is what we're hearing, is the sentiment of the board, is to try to accelerate the West Campus improvements. Um, and staff can come back with a recommendation, uh, that, that comes in front of this board for action at the next meeting.
So what are the funding sources for the West Campus?
As of now, um, it's kind of indeterminate. We can use our general obligation bonds, um, a couple of them with state funds. We can also, um, use another source of funding if we, if we like. Uh, Mr. McLean mentioned some grant funding we might be able to use to utilize some air quality, uh, things. So it's kind of a mix that we, we have availability for.
But, but if I can add...
Trustee Chan and then Trustee Cervantes?
Yeah, thank you. If, if I can add, um, Superintendent Alvarado, to, if, to, uh, um, Trustee Solis's point, with, with the incoming of Veterans Boulevard, that, that is really, I mean, you're already starting to see the homes go up, all, and, and, uh, the construction starting around the Serrion Elementary Site? So, um, I, I have a feeling that, that, that Sierra and Constance is like, is, is gonna be a lot, a lot sooner. And if we're even, we may not have a hard timetable for Shields and Brawley, but do we even have a timetable? Because right now, I, I hear Joseph, you're saying a few years out. Do you, what does, what does that mean?
Two.
Two specifically?
Two years.
Yeah, it depends on the availability of funds. If we have available funds in a year, we could potentially push that project up and start it in a year. It just kind of depends on, on how, uh, the next phase of the high school, um, plays out, and if we have enough funds to complete the next phase or complete the elementary school. On that elementary school, we, you know, have our funding in, but if, we're pretty far in line, um, in terms of getting state matching funds, so we're gonna have to front-load a lot of that money.
And, and in our talk, in our terms of our cost per elementary school? Like, I was looking a little bit at our, at our justification study. How, how does, how do us as a district generally tend to fall in terms of our, uh, our, our project costs?
Um, so I believe, and I gotta look back, but I believe the, um, the comparison they used for the justification study was, might have been based off of Tilly Elementary School. And I believe that was like 478 a square foot, I'll have to verify that. Uh, so typically, they'll update it for new cost per square foot for either new construction or modernization remodels and things like that. And then they'll just put a rough estimate together based off of this cost per square foot. Um, that square footage is a little bit less than, than, uh, Tilly Elementary School. And typically, when we get ready closer to do the project, to get better of an estimate of what, more accurate estimate what it's gonna be, we use a third-party company, um, Sierra West Group, that's a company who did our, our opinion of probable cost for the new high school, and that's a company that the state uses. So we typically try to be as close as we can to what the state looks at, um, so we can, uh, try to hone in our budgets as close as possible.
Thank you.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was just curious, because of the Ag influence out at, uh, West, could we not leverage a relationship with USDA? I know there's some matching funds that are there that help build facilities. And then how about maybe even some corporate community partnerships? Maybe some sponsorship type, um, Ag-related? You know, you have Nutrogen out there, you've got NutriAg, there's a lot of huge companies that do and operate out of the West Side over there. And maybe incorporating some of those corporate dollars to do, again, a community partnership with the school district and to leverage as many funding sources as possible. And I just wanna clarify, I wasn't saying that West should supersede a new elementary, I just wanna be clear there. But I do think most of those projects should move up from Phase Four a little, a little higher on, on the, on the priority list. The elementary is incredibly important, I understand that. But anyway, I, I was just trying to be a little creative about what we might be able to do to leverage, um, that facility and, and partnerships, whether they be through, again, government agencies and/or private sector agencies. Just food for thought.
You're, you're right. So our, our Ag Department, um, is very good, and they do a lot of partnerships with some of those, um, vendors that you've mentioned. Uh, we've recently, they've got some grants, uh, USDA grants, and we've done, um, Greenhouse. We're looking at do some other future projects with them as well. Uh, we're also looking to partner up with a grant writer to possibly, who specializes in CTE grant funding, so, um, we can, you know, try to go after a lot more CTE funds for that, for that site.
Well, if you think about President State and that Ag program, you think about some of those corporate dollars that get funded into the, some of those projects and buildings out there, and some of the wings that they have been dedicated. Why not try to be outside of the box and think about what we might be able to do here at a high school level, right?
Yeah, no, you're exactly right, yeah.
I mean, it's worth a, a try. It's worth, it's worth, as I can say, is no.
It's not just President State, it's Clovis Unified, Sanger Unified, they've all been able to do that.
Well, I'll match the East Side, uh, to the West Side any day of the week.
Trustee Solis?
Um, I think Mr. Martinez made a very good point about if we move up the elementary school within a two, two-year period. He, he clarified with if funds were available. My point I'm trying to make, and I'd like to share with the board, is we're under a timeframe here. If you start reading the business page, it isn't whether the economy's gonna turn down, it's when. Once that happens, it doesn't matter how many school bonds we got approved, we're not gonna be able to get the money to build these schools. So we don't have a lot of time to be doing this. That was the mistake previous boards made. They felt once they had the bond pass, they had it made in the shade. The economy is gonna turn down. Once it turns down, the state's ability to help us build these schools is gonna lessen. So let's not get caught watching the paint dry on the fence here. We need to move forward, and by finishing the high school, Garza High, and I mean complete, finishing the elementary school, a lot of the ills that were just brought up earlier in this meeting will be fixed themselves because we will have the permanent facilities. Mr. McLean, I, I still haven't heard from you, what are the plans for securing those funds in a timely manner?
Sure. Um, so as we were looking at the phases on that page, you can see...
Sure. Um, so as we were looking at the phases on that page, you can see that the high school is the first phase. Uh, those, those bonds are expected to be issued this fall. Uh, the elementary school would be next. Uh, we have, the phase one, phase two, and phase three are, are looking at a six-year period. So you're, uh, you, you, as you know, the, there are limitations based on assessed values, and so that's factored into the, the timing of when you're able to issue bonds. In other words, you cannot take a hundred and twenty million dollar bond, um, bond, uh, measure and issue it all at once. It has to be done over time, and you, you see that at every district. So the second issue of bonds, um, we, we were looking at with the projections of assessed value would be to issue those in two thousand twenty-three. That would be, um, to, to help fund phase two. And then two years after that, in two thousand twenty-five would be the third phase. And again, it's, it's all dependent on the assessed value, and that builds in a factor for growth as well.
Okay, and as well as the, a mistake, in my opinion, previous boards had made is because of the economy turned down, what we started doing is focusing on these little projects. Roofing, ACs, cement, which I'm not saying those projects didn't need to be, get done. But because of that, the Big Cherry Project never got started. For the first time that I can remember in this district, when we put a bond out there, we actually had a party working against us in the public. In my opinion, that was due to the fact that we were selling these school bonds with a cherry project out there and not delivering that cherry project. So in other words, the public's watching this. We need to deliver that cherry project. Or it's gonna affect us the next time we put a, a bond out there and need their approval. We need to focus on delivering what we said we were gonna deliver. And previous boards, what they did is they sat there and said, "We're gonna do these other little projects." Well, people don't remember those little projects. What they remember is you never delivered this.
Thank you, trustee Solis. Any other comments? Trustee Paul?
So, the priority has already been established. I don't think that's changed. The bond amount, if I understood correctly, was to include enough money to finish what the plans were for the high school, fill in short, shortfalls, and then also build an, at least an elementary school, correct? Okay. So I don't think that, that the focus has changed. What I was trying to emphasize, and I'm not gonna speak for, um, for my, uh, associate on the other side of the room. But, uh, it's, uh, it's critical that we get that facility, the West Campus, up and running as well. The other thing that happens when the economy dumps is that people don't, uh, buy as many homes. So, and they tend to be, they tend to stick around where they are, which means that they're gonna age up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? What I was trying to understand in our discussions about the new elementary school and West Campus is that the funding sources are different. I mean, you're not proposing that we use the bond money to make any of the improvements on West Campus. Instead of using it towards the elementary school. Is that not correct?
Well, again, we have a hundred and twenty million dollars of bond funds, and so there, there is discretion on how those are used. But as, as laid out in phases one, two, and three, that, that was the initial, um, look at how those funds would be used. If, if there needs to be adjustment for West, we, we, you know, factor, we can factor that in. Something, you know, you put something into that, um, total, something, it's a zero-sum game, right?
Okay. That, that's what I wanted to understand and make clear. So we have the discretion consistent with the language, the broad language used in those bonds to potentially say we wanna improve Central versus, uh, Cent, uh, West Campus versus the elementary school. However, I'm not suggesting that either. I, I agree with a lot of the sentiment and the comments that have been made thus far in prioritizing and ensuring that any bond money is first used for those large projects, that we complete, which we will, Justin Garza High School. And then we complete the new elementary school. And so, do we have a timeline? I know we've talked about a couple of years, the next six years. Um, but I'd like something more concrete, and it sounds like some of my colleagues would like to as well, as what does this board need to do and what decisions do we need to discuss and potentially make to ensure that the elementary school, all economic situations, uh, assuming are controlled, that we can build that and, and complete that project. And then begin to look at where's the priority with West Campus and some of our other projects and campuses that need improvement.
So, again, those projects are, are listed there in, in phase one and two in, in that order. So, um, you know, we, I, I'm hearing high school completion, I'm hearing elementary school, and then at, you know, West. Um, and then following that, there's, there's room for discretion.
Okay.
The new high school and the new elementary are top priorities?
Yes.
Trustee Chan?
Just to throw it there, and I know, um, obviously Superintendent, uh, uh, Alvarado talks to the Superintendent in Fresno Unified, Bob Nelson as well. Well, it was sort of interesting, although Fresno Unified didn't go for it, there's a lot of actually landmark money, like historical landmark money, that was u, that could have been used. They decided not to go with it for the revamp at Fresno High School. I almost wonder for, especially for the hundredth year at, um, uh, at, at, at Central West, you may be able to get money from almost a totally different source that's isn't actually, like, now there are provisions that go along with that. Like in terms of, uh, like obviously we don't have the original structure, and there's certain things in terms of, uh, what is a historical landmark that do's and don'ts that, that go along with that. But that may be just be, just a totally, like, you know, another, another way to try to get some money.
Yeah, we'll look into that. I'm not an expert, but I have been associated with some projects like that. And I would say since the original buildings are gone, I mean, there's still a few old ones out there, but I think are, like, the likelihood of that is pretty slim.
You could be right. You could be right.
Trustee Solis?
I'll try to make this my last comment.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
All right, I'm joking with you. Um, I'd like to see a plan drawn up for the West Campus. Um, I don't want my, uh, earlier statements to be interpreted that I don't think, uh, there's projects that need to be done over there. But also, I'd like to hear from the superintendent in, at a later time, a plan where we're gonna go with that facility, and that will depend what we need at that facility. Uh, I do realize it's gonna be a freestanding high school, but what else is it gonna be out there? Are we gonna have s- special programs out there? Uh, are we gonna need a, a student kitchen where they can teach cooking out there? Are we gonna need, uh, are we gonna have the do and enrollment program out there where they're gonna need special facilities? Um, there's some ROP programs out there that might need some facilities. And then we can tap into any other funding that, that's available. But I like to see a plan of what we're gonna do out there. I, I mean, it stands to reason if it's gonna be a, a standalone high school, we're gonna need a new gym out there. I believe that's the original cafeteria out there. Um, it's gonna need all those facilities, just like Garza did. So by no means do, I'm, I'm not gonna pay attention to, to West Campus. I love that campus. I went there myself. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And if, and if we, and what I was also trying to understand, or maybe what we need consistent with what trustee Solis has requested of, of a more detailed plan, when we look at page one ID one, which shows some of the facilities assessments, and, um, I assume that's the projected list of improvements, the cost of improvements. This doesn't have to be completed all at once. I mean, if, if based on what our plan for West Campus and the needs there are, we can decide that, and, and I, and I guess what I'm asking is whether it's feasible to say our multipurpose and cafeteria are priority within that campus. So the minute we have the funding, once we've completed the elementary school, this is the next project that needs to be completed. Other than a, a potential disad, cost disadvantage, or what other concerns should we be aware in, in breaking down these projects into much smaller projects to be able to complete? I know trustee Solis, you were talking about not wanting, focusing on doing some of these small projects just to justify to the public, this is how we're using your funds. But I'm just thinking, how can we actually leverage some additional funding while still staying on track and completing these projects and acknowledging we need to make improvements to that campus? Is that possible? Uh, are there significant disadvantages that you would all suggest that the board doesn't consider those type of situations?
That, that is definitely possible. Um, you know, for larger projects like this, um, it is, you know, if we have, don't have all the funding upfront to do the whole mod at once, um, it's good to phase it out, um, and then we can do it in sections.
And does that impact our ability to receive any state funding?
Well, we do it in sections, so then we'd have to, potentially might have to do, um, separate applications, depending on the phase. Um, but that'll be up to the state and how they receive it.
Okay.
It, it will allow, there, there, there could be some, um, benefits as well, depending on the enrollment there. It could allow us to, um, minimize the cost for interim housing, so there's some other silver linings that could happen.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? So I think what we'd like to see is, as trustee Solis and consistent with a lot of our comments here, and, and our interest in, in seeing what the future holds for West Campus and, and where that's, how we can prioritize would be, what's the plan? What do we want to do there? Where do we see the growth? Um, so that we can continue that discussion and be prepared to make decisions as that funding becomes available. Would that be consistent? Is there any objection to, to that direction? Because what we've made clear, and of course, correct me if, if I'm misstating, after completing Justin Garza High, the next project is the elementary school. And so I understand that project looks like two years from now. What does this board need to do and consider to stay on track with the, with the planning and then building of that project?
Nothing more.
Okay, so just waiting now. Can you just get closer to your mic, please?
I apologize. Yeah, um, the board, the board doesn't need to do anything further. I mean, I think staff understands, uh, what the priorities are in terms of the new high, I mean, Garza and the new elementary school. Um, and then, you know, we can put together, uh, our, a more comprehensive plan for West Campus. Um, I do wanted to share that we did state, um, when we proposed to separate the schools, that West Campus would be a comprehensive high school eventually, having its own athletic programs. Um, it would also be a, um, do, have its own do and enrollment, also be an early college. And we made, and that's, and we are working towards that end. As a matter of fact, we're gonna have our first incoming freshman that'll be a part of the early college experience. Uh, and in four years, those freshmen, um, incoming freshmen next year will actually hopefully walk away with an AA degree from West Campus. I should start, I should, I should call it Central High School, 'cause that's the, the, the new official name, uh, Central High School. Uh, they'll walk away with an AA and also a four-year, um, uh, high school diploma. Um, and, you know, if you stop and think about that, they're gonna walk into their, uh, freshman year of college with two years under their belt already paid for, 'cause that'll be for free. Um, and, uh, we do have identified the pathways already over at West Campus. Um, and our, our plan is to continue to expand those offerings there. Um, obviously, the Ag program is, uh, very near and dear to that, uh, to that school, and we'll continue to, uh, hopefully expand, uh, the, the Ag programs as well. But I guess we can, we can go ahead and pu, bring that at a future presentation, um, to the board. Um, but it does make a whole lot of sense right now to, to focus our efforts, if we can, on, on, uh, finishing the West Campus project sooner than later. You know, one, one immediate need next year is gonna be the ball fields, uh, over at West Campus, because the Garza ball fields are, are gonna be, um, a, a bit delayed in the timeline. So we, we will need to find a place for our baseball and softball, our spring sports, to be able to participate in, even soccer for that matter. Um, and, uh, um, and, and that location may very well be West Campus. And so, um, we are having those conversations right now, and there may be a need to accelerate the ball fields over at West sooner than later as well. So we can, we can revise this document, bring it back to the board, um, adjusting phase one and phase two, three, four, and five, um, to reflect the conversations that took place this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Solis?
And if possible, um, I'm not ignoring the fact that, uh, we need to look at the facilities for our staff as well. I'm aware of the fact that we have, what, three, four, four, five different locations, uh, that staff work at as far as shops are concerned, the Bus Barns, the, the Annex Building. And just for convenience, uh, to maximize our workforce, we may want to get that down to two sites. Uh, I believe we got a portable out at-
Where?
The portables, where the copy machines are at. I mean, you walk there, the floors feel like they buckle as you go there. The, I don't know how long those portables have been there. You sort of bounce as you walk. So, uh, we might wanna start looking at that as well. Uh, do we want one site? Do we want two sites? Well, what are we gonna do about that? With the understanding, I agree with the other board members, our priorities have to be the kids first. But we're, we're gonna have to start talking about that as well. Perhaps we could do something in phases pertaining to that.
Thank you, trustee Solis. One of the other things that, or items that I, I wanted to discuss as well. So the board has seen various contracts for improvements, whether it's a water heater or the HVAC, um, things of that nature. And I know that those are listed, uh, in each of the school sites. But do we have a plan that shows in the next five years, this is the next item that's going to be replaced unless some emergency happens and needs to be replaced sooner? Are, how are we tracking those kind of projects that have already an expected lifespan? And we push it as much as we can, but at some point, we know it's expected to last ten years, and once we're reaching that eleventh, twelfth year, I mean, we're really pushing it. Can you tell me a little, can you tell us a little bit about how we're keeping that information and, and then how we're addressing those needs?
Sure. Do you want me? So, uh, we keep a, a separate plan, um, a separate list called, it's a deferred maintenance plan, or deferred maintenance list. And, uh, what we do is couple those larger projects, and for example, replacing, uh, HVAC units on a site, or a fire alarm system, or, or, you know, some things of that nature, asphalt projects. Um, we keep a, a list, and that's how we track the age of it, what needs to be replaced, and things like that. And we work with maintenance, the maintenance department, in terms of how they track it and which units have been replaced. Um, sometimes they fail, and we need to be updated of, you know, should this be included in this HVAC replacement project for the whole site? Uh, it could turn into replacing thirty-five units to replacing only ten units, depending on what they've done. But we do have a track system, yes.
And then I assume that that's reduced the budget, like, for example, McKinley Elementary, page ninety-one, where it shows building systems, HVAC, exterior upgrades. I'm assuming that if any upgrades are made, then this budget is adjusted?
Correct. Yeah, so that's, you know, um, there's projects that happen, there's replacements that happen continually through the years. And, um, as those come up, this plan gets updated, and it's also, um, updated as we develop those next projects.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any questions from administration for the board?
I don't have a question, but did you want me to go over one of the sites to show the, it shows the age and how to see which portables and, and the-
Yeah, sure. Please.
If you wanna go to River, River Bluff, which is page one oh three?
One oh three?
Yeah.
You're just gonna go over, over the format for each of the school sites?
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you actually go, um, to the next page, one oh five, you'll see there's a brief summary of the site.
Did you repeat the page number? I'm sorry, I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. One oh five?
Thank you.
You'll see on the right side, there's a brief summary of the site acreage and, um, you know, the age of the buildings, like, things like that. And percentage of permanent and portable buildings. If you flip the page to the next one, it has a further breakdown of those buildings. And it'll say the year it was built, uh, the area, um, the counts, and then when it's up for eligibility. So if you look at that matrix, the last, um, item to the right, it'll say you're eligible for modernization. So if you look at that matrix, the last, um, item to the right, it'll say you're eligible for modernization. This is typical for every site assessment that they do.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
No problem.
Any other questions? Trustee Paul?
So just, just so we understand the timeline moving forward, so you're gonna, you're gonna make some revisions to this? It's gonna come back as a final draft, right? When do we expect that'll be on the?
April twenty-seventh, or April twenty-seventh meeting is expected to return for action.
Thank you.
So if we wanna see it before as an information item, um, we can arrange for that. So just let me know, um, or if we need additional time. Is there a timeline? Do we need to have this approved by a certain date?
No. The sooner the better though, as, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned earlier. As Mr. Reynolds mentioned earlier, there is a, um, anticipated assembly bill that's, that's gonna pass. And this document would weigh, uh, heavily in, in, in the getting in line for those additional revenues.
So will it be able to come back as an information item?
Yes, we can do that, absolutely. Um, so the only other direction that I would ask for would be, and this is to our board. We've had a lengthy discussion today and talked about a lot of the different projects and, and heard about our, our priorities. If once we go home and in the next couple of weeks, any of us need additional time to finish our review or have any other questions, please direct them to either Superintendent Alvarado or to myself, so we can make sure that we just move the deadline or, or push the expected, expected date of when this returns to the, the board for action. And really it's just to approve the plan, so it's more a formalized, uh, plan and we can use it for a future funding request. But if we need more time, I wanna make sure that we as a board have an opportunity to ask as many questions and get clarification where we need it. Um, this is something that I know when I first joined the board, I wanted to participate and I heard the same thing from a lot, a lot of my colleagues. Um, and, and we want to be able to provide our input and direct administration as to where our priorities are. So again, if anyone has any questions, um, please feel free to direct them to myself or Superintendent Alvarado. Um, and then other, otherwise, that'll conclude this item for today. Um, it is expected to return to the board on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one as an action item. We will bring it before the board before that date as an information item, um, with the revisions that were discussed today. Uh, we'll move on with our agenda. Are there any additional, um, comments or information that any board member wishes to share at this time? Okay, hearing none. Our next board meeting is scheduled, a regular board meeting, for Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, with our closed session beginning at six PM and our public session beginning at seven PM or as soon as thereafter. It will be held here. And with that, we will move to adjournment. What are the wishes of the board on adjournment? I have a motion by Trustee Solis. I have a second by Trustee Brooks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.